Okay, everybody. It is 5:01 with your convenient regular. Okay, item number 12 is discussed through disapprove for the presentation of fiscal year 23, 24 Orange County Road Bridge Surface Auction Results and Award Recognition.
Okay. Should have a summary of the results of the auction. And everything so global revenue came from the auction. Fid sale was $34,867.03. The recommendations for what we do and Tom and I, or actually Tom's office and our office coordinated on these things. Went through recommendations that we award to, of the items did seller are listed in green right down there on that last column of the. Joe, if you want me to be glad to read it. Okay, lot RB401, which was a John Deere tractor, sold for an amount of $12,500. That was the winning bid to Chris Dragon and we're recommending that we award that to him. Lot number RB402 was a 20-foot utility trailer. Larry Yosko was the winning bidder on that for an amount of $769.01. Lot 403 was an 18-foot utility trailer. That item was won by Homer Rios for an amount of $801. And by the way, you do have a list of all the bids in the back, so you can get nail that. But I just wanted for the record. Lot RB405 was a 2004 Nissan Titan Crew Cab Pickup. It sold, the winning bidder on that one was Amy Flores and she bought it for an amount of $2,500. Let's see here, the next lot, item 406, for a Ford F-150 Super Cab Pickup, we did not get the minimum bid on that. So what we're recommending and I basically for anything we didn't get the minimum bid on or for anything that didn't, do we didn't receive a bid on, I basically put the same recommendation in that column. Basically with options for you to approve. What we're recommending is for that lot 406, we go ahead and allow us to trade the vehicle in on a future purchase. And that way we can get the minimum bid amount because that $2,000 is predicated as a credit amount. That's how we come up with our minimum bids. Lot 407 was a John Deere tractor. Chris Dragon won that for an amount of $9100 and that's what we recommend. Lot 408 was miscellaneous salvage utility fence posts. We didn't receive any bid of it, a bid for it. So unless you guys know somebody who want to donate that to some sort of a, of a, some organization you'd like to donate to, we're just going to go ahead and recommend we just pick the scrapyard. This is all this stuff is just salvage materials, all where you find it is that way. We have no reason to keep it around. It just takes up space. It gets stolen, suppressed, it's a lot of milk. So our recommendation is to make that in the scrapyard delivery. RB409 salvage bridge timbers. Ronnie Stolli won that for an amount of $26. Lot 410 skeet firewood. We didn't receive a bid for that one. And I know that there's at least one person that's expressed an interest in donating to a church or something of that nature. I have no problem with that, just we can hold off on it, make that public at another time. But that would be my recommendation is somebody can use that as a donation, sure, for church. Let's see here, lot 411 is, here, oh, it's a great big round metal tank. It's huge. It worked at Falls City Yard. It's, it's going to cost us some money to get rid of it, but it will bring some scrap. And so we have no need of it. It's been sitting around over there ever since before I was here. So I would recommend we go ahead and scrap that and get rid of it and clean that area up. Damage and removal of materials for 25-foot by 50-foot pole barn. That's lot 412 and there's a similar lot for 413 for, and these are basically the buildings that are over at the Falls City Yard. Nobody, we didn't receive any bids on them. So what I would recommend we do is go ahead and just move forward with allowing the contractor to demolish them at a later date. And you know, that's coordinate with you guys, but basically we had contractors in place that can actually handle that. And or we could actually try to go out and take bids for whatever we want to do. But that's, that's something that we won't just obviously take to the scrapyard. It's a building that'll sit there. All right, the next one is lot 415 for salvage concrete drainage ends. Arturo Rodriguez won that, an amount of $89.75. Uh, let's see, lot 423 is a. Twenty six pin L ten foot bush hog shredder. Uh, that we we basically shot uh it reached its end of life. It's still usable. Arturo Rodriguez. Uh, bid on that for amount of twelve about twelve hundred ninety three dollars, so we recommend we sell that. Uh, lot 424 is a variety of electric conduit. That item was won by Ronnie Stoli by an amount of ten dollars. Recommend we sell that. We have a lot 425 is a bush hog shredder. It's a ten foot bush hog shredder. Loykatera, it's won that for amount of twenty six hundred and forty dollars. Recommend we sell that. Uh, there's an old Lincoln gas wobbling machine. It was lot 426. We did not receive a bid in house. Not quite sure what to do with that. It's still serviceable. But in lieu of anything else, the scrapyard will take it. We recommend go ahead and disposing of that. Uh, let's see here, lot 427 is uh.
Tractor tire.
Tractor tire, yeah, okay. No, it needs a wall. It needs a boot and a tube. And Ryan Stoli bought that for a hundred bucks, so we recommend we sell that. Uh, lot 428 is a bunch of chain link fences. There's ten rolls and some gates. Uh, we didn't receive a bid. We definitely want to scrap that. It's been sitting around for a while. We'd like to just go ahead and take that to the scrapyard. Uh, lot 429 was barbed wire that had been sitting around since before my time. Uh, Arturo Rodriguez uh offered one eighty five seventy five for that. We recommend we sell it. Uh, there were three chainsaws that are not running. We did not receive a bid on them. Uh, recommend we go ahead and and scrap those. And just get that out of our our hair before somebody walks in and tries to kill for the kill for those. We've actually had people try to get into the yard and take them. They're a lot of help. Uh, so then the next lot is 431, two pole saws that aren't running. Planet's Michigamba, one of those at an amount of one twenty five. Recommend we sell that. Uh, lot 432 is a ninety gallon fuel tank. Arturo Rodriguez won that at an amount of ninety five dollars and ninety cents. Recommend we sell that. Uh, pickup toolboxes and tug end extensions are lot number four thirty three. Arias one of those at an amount of thirty five dollars and one cent. Recommend we sell that. Guard rails and and hardware. Uh, there those we didn't receive a bid. Recommend take those to the scrapyard. And the last one, mercifully, it's lot 435. It's miscellaneous signpost and reflectors. We did not receive a bid for those. Recommend we scrap them. So those are my recommendations. Oh, free or have any have any uh options, I'm glad to glad to hear it.
Any discussion? Motion to approve.
I've got some questions for your honor before you decide, alright? So for the record, I can't ask him the question.
There's nothing to ask.
Well, it's about the tractor and the shredder.
You can ask after.
After court? Okay, thank you.
A motion to approve item number two has recommended by our engineer to sell the. To sell all merchandise of the bids that he recommended.
Second.
If not, the bid.
The amount of the bid, the dollar come out.
Okay, motion is second still with Mr. Giddy.
Yes, sir.
Alright, although the favor taken by my right hand, anybody vote in here. Okay, item number thirteen, our consistent agenda, we're gonna take action. Move, we have reports from our IP department, our precinct one and two work. Uh, JP one, two, three, four, each one of them has their reports in here, your maintenance department, sheriff's office. Uh. Department of Motor Vehicles over here and the district clerk. Also budget amendment BA twenty twenty four that can. Uh, Tom, 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 Dr. S. P. There's the part. Parts of what I've got to.
Oh, that's right.
Pass it by just. We have to order our for the beginning of the fifth year.
Correct.
So. Twenty four thousand three.
Stand up on the reports on the budget amendment.
A second.
Motion in a second, although the favorites taken by my right hand. Item number fourteen, discussion on any of the items from the consistent agenda that we need to act on.
Judge, I'd like to pull the sheriff.
Okay, sheriff, sheriff's office, item for eyes. Yes.
Uh, I just want to call into the court's attention and to the public's attention that. Forty eight bed jail. Daily jail population go from sixty nine. To. Eight fifty. And we're. At Geo Veds, but when those go away and they will go away. Sixty people in a forty eight bed jail, what are you gonna do?
Hang a breastplate.
We're gonna have to.
Tommy.
We're gonna have to.
Last time.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Alright, sorry.
We're gonna, you know, I just want the public to know that there's going to be some modifications done to the new to to the current jail. Or we're gonna have, y'all are gonna have to be budgeting to to send people to other jails now.
I I I think our our contract with Geo is through twenty twenty five. And uh, I I've had some discussions with higher ups at Geo. Say uh that they want to work out a new contract. Uh, that being said, from a business perspective, uh Geo can make a whole lot more money. By getting out.
I hope they will, you know, they want to get out of the jail commission and send the beds to the cad with beds for federal. But I just want the people to know that the population and I expect the population to go up. You know, after everything changes.
Any other discussion on the. Sheriff's office. Item number fifteen, let's have our updates from our commissioner's precinct one.
Okay, let me start with the merchant man. Uh, we've been lads cup that. As a truck wreck. Truck drivers running off the road and they try to come back on the road, flip their truck. Suddenly we had a saltwater boat truck just only at them ninety nine, close to camera one ninety two. Turned over, dumped a hundred and thirty barrels of saltwater into the ditch. Luckily it was contained in the ditch and uh the owner of the trucking company at within it was responsible for it. So we had him, we had him cleaned up, cleaned it up. Um. A workshop at Trinity University for National Weather Service, actually on February twenty seventh, and they issued out with their findings. And we talked about a lot of stuff up there, but. One of the main things, there were three things that were came out of the panel of discussion and outbreak of our groups that we had. It was that. One, there's a greater need for timing onset and ending information and confidence of hazards and timing for weather alerts. Another one, the decision makers need a greater level of hazard details in the forecast. Cause they'll give you just a little little strip, but we want to know what's what's really gonna more input about the hazards. And then the public, uh, they want, we need to keep the message simple and focus on many impact of actions it takes, so. That's still in the works and maybe some will coming after that. Uh. Uh, with also on May twenty eighth at six o'clock to until eight o'clock at the city hall in Kennedy. I've got Paul Europe, he's the, Paul is the national, he's the, he's the weather. He's National Weather Coordinating Meteorologist out of San Antonio. He's gonna come down and offer what they call a sky warning class. Sky warnings is just as the basic class tells you about, they'll talk about how the clouds act up. Things you should look forward if you're out in the if you're out in the field or working, whatever. It's just a good. Flash flood work. He talks about hail, tornadoes and other other severe weather. Hurricane season is just about two months away or so, so this is might be a good class. For anybody to go do, it's open to the public and most importantly, it's free. Uh, I expect all of, I've sent out about sixty invitations, responders and different companies. If they show up, they show up. If they don't, that's okay too, but it's offered to the public and. And hopefully they'll y'all come. Be at the Kennedy Auditorium again from six to eight. Also, uh. I've been working with the Forest Service and uh. My friend there Drew, he sent me a deal out. They they have a pamphlet thing that goes out and they put. Who to call at the bottom of the thing, if you ever decide to burn or something like that. And it gives you a hint of something you should you should uh say if you try to call in uh the size of the burn. Like the location, how long you think you're gonna burn and what's gonna be the size of it and then a miserable contact person. Uh. They had this judge put on our website. And it's again, if you need copies of it, if you want a copy of it, you can call me. I'll print it out for you or. Or you can go to the to the website. Uh, also this morning at, it starts about ten minutes, but there's gonna be a. Uh, Devin is having a uh. We're having a meeting prior to our drill for next week in Gillette area. It's at that off of Canar road two. Three, two fifty nine, I think it is. It's a dead end road. It's that got a facility at the very end of it. Walked through this morning, uh, a little bit looking to go through it and see what's uh. How it just give everybody some kind of an information of the site before we have our drill. Paul has been in the rig just outside of Kennedy, just right there by the cemetery, so we've been watching that one pretty close as well. Otherwise, the commissioner side, uh. I got baited on 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 to uh come in David Beattier and then have on race they ran. I hope I wish them both success. And uh. I've been working, judge, also I've been talking with Mr. Chapman and and Miss Topia. About the uh game ordinance that we were trying to get get done and with Sheriff and Robert Eber. So hopefully we can, I need we get Robert, Mr. Chapman said he can explain some concerns they have, I guess. And we'll go from there. I had an email from Pam. Uh. The lady Wagner with Rentworth uh. Relit for science or so, I can't think of their name. But they're a broadband company. Uh, Judge and I met with her. Two, three weeks ago. And we had Judge Hidkey and I had some ideas and I concurred with those ideas. Uh. So I drove around and I. Got all the cell towers. I maybe missed a few, but I put them onto a map. And provided to the judge and then we sent the map to this uh Pam Wagner. And they were looking at, we're trying to find the dead spots. We know where the dead spots are in the county, but. It's starting to deal with the possible grants that we could get to. And we also have a uh. Money set aside with the ARPA money to help if we had to put in for infrastructure. And the last thing I have that I'll shut up, uh, judge, court, uh. We still have ARPA money and I have it allocated for generators. And I'm gonna call this one guy uh that worked with the jail. He seemed to help us out quite a bit. And I want to take him to the. Uh, random here in in Roden Ridge and uh look at the other offices, see what they think, see what we take to if we ever have to emergency generators up to it. All City Fire Station. So I'm working on on all that, but I'll. And my question is, when we, if he gives us some numbers, do we have to put that out for a bid or if he's on the bond board? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Check.
Because it's gonna be a uh, it's gonna be something that. I hope we never have to use, but I want to make sure the county has it before we do. And uh.
Thank you, Mr. Precinct.
Alright, let's see, County Road one ninety nine is last week, we had a water transfer company damaged the pavement. And uh, yeah. Called them. And Special Services is working on there. They're gonna pay for repairing uh pavement to uh. County Road one ninety four should be paved next week. Uh. Seizing some county road two fifty four, two fifty three and uh. Stern resolved uh. Everything will definitely all that. Up to uh. Right, and. We're gonna have a a door installed in the axle. There wasn't an earthquake last night. Anybody here?
Oh, I forgot to talk about Barry.
About what?
Barry Sorrels.
Oh, I I did talk to him.
But you won't better believe none.
Yeah. Back here. Uh, touching on the the earthquake, Shelby reached out to a guy at the railroad commission. Uh, what's his name?
His name is Barry Sorrels. He's director of oil and gas and also he's a deputy director for the Railroad Commission.
Yes, and uh, and he is researching, he said, before we go and have any type of down on earthquake, whatever, he said, I want to get facts. And uh, so we don't get people all stirred up over what could be something, what could be nothing, but he is generating fact right now and he and I have traded. Uh, emailed themselves all members though, uh, from top of that. Right.
Well, I've been meeting with the engineer of the construction of Connor Road two sixty six, Connor Road two ninety, Connor Road two ninety eight, the progress of two ninety eight. Also, we started construction on County Road Redderville. Redderville is one of the, one of the dark roads that still have a name shown. Most of them have numbers, but I think it's County Road Vista, County Road Redderville. So we are starting construction on that one today.
Commissioner Precinct.
So uh. Houston tree been paved there. That's really, really fine. Thank you guys. Uh, it is still closed off, but uh, back. Today, um, other than that, guys, I had quite a big uh. Concern about fixing, about found uh trees on the road. Back on the road, so it's all consistent with. So it's been solid concern.
Alright, item number sixteen, we'll have our reports from our Texas collector, our monitor, our treasurer, can you do this?
How are you, okay? For the uh report for the month of February, for the county eminent of the current month to date was one million, seven hundred, four thousand fifteen dollars and sixty cents. The current year to date was twenty one million, three hundred sixty seven thousand forty four dollars and ninety six cents. Ninety seven point five eight percent elected. When I left the office this morning, it was ninety seven point six five a year ago this day. At the end of February last year, it was ninety six point four five percent. So as of February of this. So as of February of this year, we're one point one three percent higher than we were, the collections are doing very well this year. For the delinquent month to date, it was eight thousand, three hundred, thirteen dollars and nineteen cents. The delinquent year to date was forty-eight thousand, six hundred, ninety dollars and twenty-two cents, with nine point six six percent collected. On the county INS, the delinquent month to date was seventy-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. The delinquent year to date was three hundred, fifty dollars and seventy-four cents, with two point three two percent collected. The county Roden Bridge, the current month to date was two hundred, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred, twenty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. The current year to date was three million, four hundred, forty-seven thousand, ninety-four dollars and seventy-one cents, with ninety-seven point five eight percent collected. The delinquent month to date was one thousand, six hundred, ninety dollars, fifteen cents. The delinquent year to date was nine thousand, seven hundred, eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents, with ten point oh two percent collected. On the top of the date, everybody gets paid except for two that are still out there, and those are due to supplements that have been sent out for minerals. They paid the majority of it, all they have are some little bills that have been sent out for supplements.
Fifty dollars, five dollars.
Yeah, one's five dollars, and the other one's four dollars on the county M and O. So they're throwing tiny bills. So, other than that, everything's going pretty good.
Good morning. I gave y'all a little summary sheet like our outside auditors did, so you know, you can, you're still gonna get your monthly report, but then we can kind of page due at your convenience, but I'm gonna go over the monthly, this month recap for you guys. So at the end of February, uh, we collected thirteen million, two fifty-three, forty-eight, now, war tax, which is ninety-five percent of our budget, ninety-five point four one. County sale tax, two million, nine eighty-two sixty-five, which is forty-five percent of our budget. Entrance, we earned one million, two sixty-one, nine seventy-eight, which is sixty-six point fourteen percent of our budget. Our EMS receipt from forty-eight, eighty-seven-two, which is sixty-five point eight percent of our budget. Being five months into the year, we should only be at forty-one, six-six percent, so you can see we've collected phenomenal for this year. Other part of that is expenses. If you look at our expenses, we've only paid out twenty-five point twenty-seven percent of our budget, which leaves us seven, seven-three percent of the general fund, we don't wanna use that, but it's just everyone being good stewards of the budget that you guys have given them. The non-court bills, this is the last sheet of my report, amounted to nine million, two fifty-four, seven oh four twenty-two. And of that amount, Geo portion was eight million, one forty-four, two twenty-five, ninety-one. We had a share of sale land purchase of forty-five thousand, Judge, if you want to comment on that.
The, the forty-five thousand?
For the rugie, yes, sir, for the land and rugie.
Uh, yes, there was a, a piece of property in Rungie that Commissioner Phee's were, uh, stumbled upon, and, uh, it was a taxed property. And, uh, probably ten acres. Just four and a half acres. Um, piece of property that if the county would buy, uh, for a future, if ever, since it's a tax property, we have to hold off on doing anything with it for six months or a year. Six months, six months. And, uh, to give the previous owners opportunity if they wanna come back, pay back taxes, and buy it back, so, uh, yeah, I'll hold on to that for a century. Might well spin. Uh, payroll for last month was five hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight seventy-four, fifty-nine. Payroll taxes, insurance, retirement, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine eighty-nine, ninety-four. Utility, forty-one thousand, three seventy-three, ninety-one, ninety-nine, and the other, it's like restitution, so forth, those, uh, twelve thousand, two thirty-nine, seventy-nine. Our investments at end of February were a hundred and three thousand, one thirty-three, three point sixty-three, you can see the breakdown, Texas class was very, six twenty-seven, eight fifty-two, eight. Tax pool, very, so noted, nine forty-six, zero seventy-three, ninety-six. And Volty Bank, which is Persian LLC, was thirty million, five ninety-nine, oh, seven, seven, fifty-nine. Another thing I wanna point out, I also gave you guys a copy, we just finished an audit of the tax office, the recent one. But I'm gonna bring it up, 'cause it's gonna be on the bill, that's gonna be talked about shortly, so I did audit for the tax office up through twenty-two. We identified that it was overpayment to cards, which we met with them, and we found out there was actually, um, a lateral amount due, because there was a payment, and it wasn't clear who, who belonged to, and it actually belonged to them, so that is what's prompting, um, the payment back to the tax office for fiscal year twenty-three, and also bank deposit slips, well, she doesn't have a source of income to purchase bank deposit slips, so that's what makes up some of the difference as well for both, for vehicle property tax, she's aware now, she purchases those, it would be coming out of the county budget, because her money she collects, and she pays it right back out, there's no reason funds to pay for it, I don't know, it's just been done that way with yours. But that's all I have, if you have any questions on the reports.
Thank you. Shelby, are you gonna give your answer?
The states are, June, the end of January was thirty-four, or not January, I'm remembering, uh, thirty-four million, eight sixty-five, one eighty-three, eighty-six cents. Disbursements was thirty-two million, one thirty-one, nine fourteen and seventy cents. The balance at the end of February was a hundred and five millions, two hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred, eighty-four dollars and two cents.
Item number for seventeen, that's just slash action on treasury report.
Now, let me prove the treasure report, sir. Second.
Favors, right hand, you'd like to move to that. Item number eighteen, acknowledgements, discussion on personnel changes. That's in all departments, uh, don't have anything, I mean, retiring, uh, VCR, hiring sheriff's office, hiring for security, uh, juvenile's hiring, all of that stuff's on our website, oh, if they, uh, we're looking at their, I swear. Also hiring the HR department. Item number nineteen, payment of bills.
We're about to build last Friday, so the total bill for today is one million, three fifty-eight, seven twenty-three, sixty-three. The large ticket items on the general fund is five hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine fifteen eighty-four. We purchased a five-year ship for the Sheriff's Department, possibly a four-year, amount for the prey of the district. The Roden Bridge, uh, expenses for this time are eight hundred and nineteen thousand, four seventy-six. There is one bill that, um, we identified after the list went out to you guys, it was for the library, it's reimbursement for our library director. They made an assumption that she had traveled on there to pick up checks for her staff, and she meets every Friday with her staff. Go to find out, it was not, so she's gonna read, I'm gonna request that y'all submit, approve the bills that's submitted, and she got an email, it's pointing to me to reimburse the county into fourteen dollars and seven cents.
Question about the bill?
Not a question, but comment, looks like around a hospital or a jail.
You know, we have to, oh, absolutely.
I know, bitch, getting...
They're getting one away. It is unfortunate, I saw it on the account, we were there, we have a hundred and forty-seven beds, it's...
It's gonna get worse.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment on the bill that presented.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, paying the bills, right hand, anybody opposed to paying the bills? All right, we've got acknowledgements that the Commissioner's Court will meet on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, kind of, morning, over in the store courtroom at one oh one, North Henry Avenue.